I'd like to call this regular meeting of council for Monday, June 11th to order. Presiding as adoption of the agenda recommendation this council adopts June 11th, 2018 regular meeting agenda as presented. Who were please? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammett, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Moving on to the minutes section, 3A, recommendation council adopts the May 22nd, 2018 special to go in camera meeting minutes as presented. Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Recommendation, council adopts the May 22nd, 2018 regular meeting minutes as presented. Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammett, all those in favor? Opposed? Carry. And recommendation is council adopts the May 28th, 2018 special to go in camera meeting minutes as presented. Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammett, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. All right, moving along to 4A, under registered petitions and delegations, subject matter, development permit application DP 2018-002 for proposed freestanding restaurant with drive-through and patio at 441 Central Avenue from development and engineering. The recommendation is that council approves the development permit application number DP 2018-002 for a 40-seat freestanding restaurant, drive-through and outdoor patio will be located at 441 Central Avenue legally described as Lot A, District Lot 108, SDYD Plan, KAP 34395 in accordance with the site layout and development drawings contained in Appendix 1. Over please. Counselor Hammett? Counselor Thompson? Okay, discussion. Counselor Ross.
All right, so there's a lot about this that I've not been happy with and since I came into council, I'm originally asked for a moratorium on drive-throughs. It wasn't supported and I understand why, but I admire Nelson and the fact that they did put it through for a moratorium on drive-throughs in the community. I'm also a little disappointed with the strategic impact. I did ask that there be lists of checks that a potential new business would go through, checklist, and I see economic growth and I think it's weak and fiscal responsibility, you know, infill development, I don't even know what that means. But there's no, you know, we talk, I talk about the triple bottom line, which includes economic growth and social benefits, so it's economic, it's social, and it's environmental. Are you guys concerned?
Yeah, I would like that delegation present first, please.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what I'd like to hear then from the delegation is how you're going to improve the environment in our community.
Perfect, perfect. Now, I'm not sure if that's who are standing in this room. Sit down, do you need a mic?
Yes, if one of you, please move over here.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, worship members of council. My name's Ryan Searsma, I'm with Dillon Consulting. I'm actually based out of our Calgary office. I came in today, so first time actually in Grand Forks and I am really impressed to talk about a little bit of the environmental impacts in this community. We'll get to it in the presentation, but one thing I did notice just driving down Central Avenue was the street canopy, which was thoroughly impressive as from my perspective. I'm here representing the landowner as well as the restaurant owner, as well as my company, so I can't answer all your questions. Hopefully, we can talk through a few things and hopefully the presentation will shed light on some of those concerns. So without further ado, I'll jump into it. I'm trying to keep it to about five, six minutes, so we're going to do a quick overview of the ownership groups, overview of some of the key stakeholders that we've been working with, particularly onsite, go into touch a little bit about the design elements. We're looking at a new site, site design, a sign design, a pylon sign on the southeast corner of the site, and then a little bit about economic potential, so we're talking about one of the few pillars of sustainability and the triple bottom line. So my company, Dillon Consulting, is a national planning, engineering, and environmental company. We've done planning and permitting and engineering services for Tim Hortons across Canada. The map on the right-hand side of the screen is just an example of the store locations we've worked on specifically for Tim Hortons across Western Canada, and the stars are our offices. You can see Calgary, we just opened Edmonton office and then our Vancouver office, so that's a quick overview of us. The restaurant owners, Paul and Beryl, they're located in the South Oconoggin region. They own eight stores with plans to open more locations and they've been excited in working towards opening a location in Grand Forks for a number of years. They're a family outfit and they've been operating for about 2.6 years. They work on the floor, hands-on, daily. They're a strong supporter of local community initiatives. For example, they're just finishing up, I believe, he sent me an email this morning with regrets, obviously not being able to make it today, but they've been working on a hospital revitalization fund, about $100,000 coming out of pocket in this area. They're very excited about the opportunity to come to Grand Forks and look forward to becoming part of the business community. The landowner, Alcar Investments, we've been working closely with Alan Hannah Bauer. They've owned the shopping center since February 2007 and about a year and a half ago, they got endorsements from the National Tim Hortons Group to potentially set its importance at the site and we've been working through a number of site challenges. Those site challenges have impacted some of the environmental landscaping, for example, at this site, but we'll talk about that a little bit and maybe there's some wiggle room. They are working to break ground this summer and they're hopefully opening in December. So a little bit about the existing site, everyone is, I'm assuming, familiar with it. There's three existing tenants, Savon, BC Liquor, and Fields. Their key stakeholder concern has primarily moved so far to parking considerations as well as visibility. The tenants are really looking to have the same amount of parking after Tim Hortons has been completed, so we've been working with the city of Grand Forks as well as the church directly behind this facility to secure employee parking. Visibility has been a concern for the existing tenants, particularly with through traffic, being able to see their businesses and that is where we're working through with the pylon sign to potentially direct traffic into those stores in the back. We're also looking at potentially expanding their signage for increased visibility. This is the site plan that you saw in your council package. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things on this, the two new accesses, so they're actually being moved up from Highway 3, which in our opinion is a safer access that allows more time to, for vehicles to queue as they turn in and out of this parking lot. We're maintaining angled parking along Fifth Street, parallel parking along Fourth Street. There'll be wayfinding signage directing people to the downtown core of the city and as well, you'll see the note with pylon sign is. The drive-through, it is proposed to be a double drive-through, a 16-car stack wrapping around a 2,500 square foot restaurant, and we'll get to some of the restaurant designs. But just noting that it is a very tight site and this staff has to meet certain standards for Tim Hortons National and this was the way to achieve that, and so we can talk a little bit about that if that's an issue. Moving to the design elements, this was a key focus for the city when we brought forward the Tim Hortons application. They didn't want this to be just a Tim Hortons, they wanted it to be a sort of made in Grand Forks Tim Hortons. This takes a long time getting through Tim Hortons National. You may have seen the news, they have been in the news recently, they announced a $700 million renovation program across Canada with a new welcome design, a more comfortable interior, a sort of a living room feel. They've taken this welcome design and made it sort of cottage timber feel for Grand Forks. It has gabled roofline, decked up wood trim, molding accents, stone base with a stone sill, and wood siding. There are some porcelain tile, there's some lock window trims, and then the two key features of the welcome design are red entry doors and a red drive-through window. We believe this is consistent with the character of neighboring developments as well as the policy direction in the community. Here is the north elevation, so if you were standing in the parking lot or at BC Liquor, this is what you'd be looking at. You can see the gabled roofline, the tiles behind the Tim Hortons deckles. This is looking from Fourth Street, so just side profile, side elevation, gabled roofline again. This is the drive-through side, so this is the side facing Highway 3, which would be buffered with landscaping. And then here is looking from Fifth Street, so as you wrap around, they need, obviously the whole building can't do windows, you need service out of one side. These are the sign concepts, this is the first time given the city's probably seen this other than maybe an email or two here and there. We've been working with Alcar Investments and our architects to design a sign that would sort of become a landmark for this shopping center and for the community. Alan has been really pushing it to shuttle like a train trestle. The details of the construction would be to be determined, but it's hopefully going to be made of timber, a lot of timber materials, and the proposed shopping center name would be Boundry Heritage Shopping Center. That's the sign. On the economic potential, they're estimating 1,200 to 1,500 customers per day. They're looking to also promote the downtown core businesses, that would be through wayfinding signage and other mechanisms. Seventy percent of that traffic would be through the drive-through. There would be 30, 35 local employees, which would be needed. The restaurant ownership group notes that they have a generous wage and employment package, medical benefits, bonus opportunities, RSPs, and opportunities for advancements through the organization, their particular group, and that their average staff rate at existing stores, there are eight stores, their average hourly rate is $17.48 per hour. I believe that is the last slide, so hopefully didn't take too much of your time, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and getting us onto your agenda at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Trump.
Oh, so you have to turn your microphone off.
Thank you very much for that, thank you, Mayor Comber. Thank you very much for that presentation. It was interesting because what we've been looking at on the council notes is just basically the plans and then a lot of the detailed background information. I've got a number of questions. First of all, I'd like to start off if we could get the one back up again, show the site plan with all the parking. That one there. So you mentioned 1,200 to 1,500 people coming through a day and 70% of that would be flow through traffic cars, so what that would equate to would be about 800 cars going through there, something like that, a day? And then the other 400 or 400 to 600 vehicle, or however you work that out, whatever the equivalent would be, would be using the parking spaces? Am I, I'm just trying to get a figure here of sort of what the impact of 1,200 to 1,500 customers a day is going to look like in this very congested area?
So through the chair, Counselor Tripp, thank you for your comments. Not all those trips would be new trips as well. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm going to put that caveat in there first, but so the way you're interpreting it is there'd be 1,200 to 1,500 new trips through this parking lot, which wouldn't necessarily happen, there's going to be a lot of crossover traffic between the free existing businesses. I believe we've been working with MOTI and those trip rates haven't triggered the TIA or any upgrades in their opinion, and I may have interfered to administration on that. With regards to the parking calculations, there is more than enough parking to meet your current bylaws at this site, even if we didn't accommodate the extra parking or say employees behind the church, so.
If I may, I just add another question to that?
Okay.
Thank you. So would you kindly be able to point out for us where those 90 spaces are on that drawing? I found it very difficult to actually count out 90?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay. Well, yeah, excluding the...
Counselor Trump, Dorsey.
Your worship, in the preliminaries, with top of the staff, the parking has already been determined, so we're not going to count every line on here. There's enough that makes it adequate.
Always bear in mind, Counselor Tripp, we'll give you a bit of latitude on this, but our only role as council is form and character. We do not make any decisions on any other aspect of this project because it has already all been decided and signed, so we're not going to go into a long draw note procedure.
Right, I understand that, but I still believe that it's important for us to express our concerns so that we know what we're up against as a community when we are facing, you know, some very additional concerns when it comes to parking. I was over just this afternoon at 1:30 when we left here, just driving by, there was, this is a normal Monday afternoon, normal Monday afternoon, not even a busy tourist season yet, nothing going on in the community, there were 63 cars in that parking lot. And I know that during the summer, we have far more activity in that parking lot, especially with large RVs that come in, take up several spaces, do a lot of shopping, and you know, this, it may be a moot point we sing, but I'd like to go on record saying that I have a lot of concerns about this location. I love a Tim Hortons here in town, I am a Tim's fan. I had weaned myself off of Tim's when we moved here, but I am just, I am not in favor of this location in any way, shape, or form.
Then you should also take a concept at our A&amp;W because I am in very close proximity of that establishment, and if you talk about congestion, you hit the jackpot right there. So that one is way more congested than this one will propose to be. Per capita of cars. Counselor Hammett and Counselor Ross.
Yeah, when this proposal first came to us, I had some concerns about the location, the proximity to downtown and the congestion, but I see that our role isn't to approve this. This is not city property, this is private land, and providing that they get the permits and the development application falls through former characters is anything we actually have say on. I am happy to see that they've made arrangements with the Christian Center behind the whole plaza and added sufficient parking for all of the staff. Normally, the parking lot along Central Avenue, the closest to the highway, is typically empty, whereas people that are shopping at the stores, the liquor store, they're usually parking right in front of the same with Fields and overweight, they're parking as close to overweight as possible. This portion across from the highway, I've never really seen a lot of traffic in there. So where the Tim Hortons is going is where it's usually pretty empty. But their requirement is only for 84 parking spots, and with the extra parking that they've put in the back now, they have 93. But I have to say that, location or not, I'm encouraged that we have developers that want to come into Grand Forks and invest in our community. We depend on commercial and industrial tax bases and the mill rate on the commercial and industrial to sustain us through our asset management and especially now in a time where we have a lot of assets to rebuild. We need that money and we can't go back to the taxpayer and put that burden on residential, which is what would happen if we don't encourage industrial and commercial growth. I like the form and the concept. I can't say I'm in love with the location, but at the same time, I think that we desperately need something that's open 24 hours. We need something that's going to encourage people to stop in Grand Forks at night, give a place to go for coffee, a bite to eat. Hopefully, people will make this their last stop of the night because now they can stop and eat and maybe get a hotel or a motel and stay here and tour around town the next day. I think it's a great economic boost for our community. I don't see it hurting our downtown businesses. Those that are loyal to our downtown coffee shops and cafes are still going, because they're funky and they're trendy, and they're still going to be going to those places. I think it's going to bring more people into the downtown core and help to create, once again, vibrant downtown economically. And everybody that, since I've been here in 2004, all I've heard is, we need a Tim Hortons, we need a Tim Hortons, we need a Tim Hortons, and now we have one. And I think that along with Tim Hortons, we're going to start to see other interests from other development, and we need that for our tax base. So I'm not thrilled with the location, but I'm happy you're here.
If I may just weigh in on that conversation very briefly, this Tim Hortons branding is going to be a staple for our community, it's going to be a catalyst, and I'm very impressed with the fact that it's going to give level entry jobs, which is one aspect that I've always said since I've taken on this mandate as mayor. We need level entry jobs. This is a catalyst for other developers to come in and start the city moving. Thank you. Counselor Ross.
Yeah, I'd like to, that you do offer level entry jobs and apparently you don't just pay minimum wage, but you push the envelope there and pay wages that give people a little bit more dignity. And also, I do know that Tim Hortons also often hires people who are financially challenged in some ways to make space for them, and I always admire that. So I do know there's many other people in this community who may look at this as an opportunity to get their first employment, and that's fabulous. I like that. I didn't hear you talk about the triple bottom line, and if you could, like, what would be great is, why don't you blend plastic straws? Do something like that. Be their franchise, be brave, like, A&amp;W's doing something like that, and like, just be brave and say, this is a first franchise that we've opened up in North America and we're going to try not having plastic straws and have 100% recyclable containers in all of our food, so do something about those plastic mugs and forks, because that's one thing we do see, is we see, I don't want to start seeing Tim Hortons cups on the side of the road, that's not going to be cool, and let's get rid of those plastic straws because we all know that there, we need to do something about that in our, globally. Why doesn't Tim Hortons do it first? Wouldn't that be awesome? I'd even go, I'd even go to Tim Hortons and celebrate that and promote it if you guys did something that was so courageous. So like, I would like to see you be courageous in that. And so just, can you talk a little bit about, you were saying about you were going to address your triple bottom line and just share that with us?
Thank you. Through the chair, Counselor Ross, thank you for the comments about the triple bottom line. I just want to reiterate that I'm not, I don't work for Tim Hortons in their corporate branding strategy. I am a planner by trade and I do planning and municipal permitting, so as far as the straws and that sort of thing, I can definitely try to reiterate it to the powers that be, but I can't comment on that strategy. The triple bottom line, I guess if you, we focused first on economic, we sort of captured that with entry level jobs. The environmental is difficult given the site constraints here. However, it's not, like, when you talked about the infill development, here you're taking a surface parking lot and you're using existing infrastructure and putting a building in place, so infill development in this case is satisfying in environmental benefit. Here, you're not going outwards, you're going upwards in your downtown core.
You're not paving more land.
You're not paving more land and you're using existing infrastructure and the capacity that's existing there. The social benefits, I mean, the spin-off benefits from job creation is one that I could touch on, and then I'll touch on the restaurant group and their community initiatives. I can't speak exactly to it, and I'd have to pull out my phone to tell you exactly what he said to me this morning, but I'll pull it up because I think it is, it is important, and let me just, should be right here, just one second. Now I've got a thousand emails or something. Okay, so Paul and I were communicating most of the day and I talked on the phone a number of times. He said an example of the community initiatives and support charities they have completed is the South Oconoggin Regional Hospital Equipment Fundraiser, and that was $100,000 that I spoke to, I shouldn't want to misquote that, and that's why I pulled this up. Normally, I wouldn't pull my phone out at the council.
That's admirable, that's admirable. So I just like, I think today we need to really raise our bars in terms of being courageous as we develop.
Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler, and that'll be your asking of the camp, Counselor Tripp.
You're what?
Your last question.
I think I've only commented twice, I think I could get three. Anyway, I get you. Thank you, Mayor Comber. Yeah, I don't disagree with Counselor Hammett and Counselor Ross's comments. I do believe that we really can benefit from the economic development here and that the jobs that it will create for people is great, and we really need that. But I am just really concerned about the location. One of the things that you mentioned was how you're looking at some alternative, maybe some alternative parking. I don't know if that would be for staff or the people who are working in those businesses there, but we also have a very real issue here with a lot of the RVs, like, we're on a major highway that we get RV traffic all summer long. It starts now and it really goes through late September, October, and I think, I feel that it would be a very great benefit to capitalize and pull in the RV traffic that goes by. One of the things that happens now is that they are able to park in that parking lot and then from there, they go in to get the groceries. We have our farmer's market Tuesday, Friday mornings, they can hop across and get fresh veggies and then wander downtown. There's a comment in here about wayfinding signs. I don't know if that's your, going to be your responsibility developing this, but is there going to be any provision made or thought worked to or given with the city on providing any kind of extra parking or directional for these larger RVs, because that's going to be tough for them to get into now.
Mr. Gates.
On the wayfinding sign piece, that was one of the city's requests to cite some wayfinding signs there that would fit in with the rest of our wayfinding signs.
Okay, so this is in conjunction with this project or it's separate? It's just a separate issue that we were all leaving with, with the wayfinding signs?
It is because of this project and would tie into the broader wayfinding sign that we would have a location there.
Okay. Is that just that here?
And directing RV traffic down to other parking down here.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Thompson. Can we give Counselor Butler first crack?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd actually rather pass it off. I'm having a hard time speaking to this issue because it's something I know that the community really wants. I mean, I've heard so many people in town excited to have this come here, and as a previous fitness instructor and nutritional consultant, I'm having a really hard time biding my time. My kids are already bugging me to go there, I'm not too happy about that. But I can't argue with anything in the forming character, which is what council has responsibility for right now. I'd like to see it actually look like a cottage, it's an imitation of a cottage, but it seems to fit in the town mindset, so I'll have to vote in favor of it. I was impressed, though, by the community involvement that it sounds like that they do, especially with the $100,000 for the hospital. We could certainly use help with our hospital here, lots of different organizations that are always looking for money in town, sports organizations, I know they'll support that, so. And with our downtown core being devastated at the moment, I think it's great that there will be someone like Tim Hortons that should provide financial leadership in the downtown core to help get people back on their feet, so. Not thrilled about the location either, but I think it'll be a good thing in the long run. I also would, though, I mean, if the next council coming in, or even this council on the way out, wants to be bold and courageous and put forward a no more drive-throughs so that we don't get fast food restaurants all down our main strip and devastate that beautiful canopy that you saw coming in and to promote health in our town, to promote healthy local restaurants, as an organic gardener, I'd much prefer to see that, so if the council wanted to put forward a no drive-through policy, I would totally support that.
Then we would better make it retroactive to existing drive-throughs.
No, you can't grandfather them.
Well, then, that's not even an option. I would never recommend this. I must command Dillon- I must commend Dylan Consulting, by the way, before we go any further. And Counselor Thompson, if you would seek my indulgence to be able to just speak on this. Your approach to your design is admirable. It surpasses way a lot of buildings that we have here in Grand Forks right now. I could name a total couple of them, but I won't, only so not to make them feel bad. But excellent concept, excellent with the signage that you're putting up. Paul's ready to be placed. And Paul. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have no issue whatsoever with the form and design of the facility. I am really pleased that Tim Hortons is going to do some wayfinding signage to direct their visitors, their customers to the downtown core, that's certainly more than we have in existence at this time. And so I'm fully in support of the application for the Development Service and I will definitely be supporting that.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. All right, unless there's anything else, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you again.
Don't forget about the straws. Don't forget about the straws.
Control over this law of Tim Hortons.
I was thinking those.
That's the right one.
Plan to see, that's what things grow. At the station can do.
Yes.
It was the first one.
Station pub was the first one. All right.
Your word is just, my eyes there are pretty bothering me, so if you don't have an objection, I would like to excuse myself from the meeting at this time. And I will do the appropriate paperwork when I'm in the city home next.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Take care of yourself. Thank you.
And I will be done. Thank you for that.
Okay. All right, moving along to item six. A written reports of council recommendation is that all written reports of council submitted to the June 11, 2018 regular meeting be received. Move her please, Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond. All those in favor?
Who?
Oh, sorry.
I've got a motion on the table. Yeah, as discussed at the previous council meeting, when I gave my notice of motion, I have a motion I'd like to bring forward this evening. The council instructs staff to research and prepare a report to the committee at the whole, including a draft bylaw for revitalization of tax exemption for downtown landlords who were impacted by flooding and wish to further improve their structures, interior and/or exterior, that comply with the city's form and character policy. This tax exemption bylaw will only be available for five years and will expire in 2023. So I don't know how, if you want to word that differently, I thought five years for people to capture that and have that available for them. This isn't something that the city can carry on forever. But I have provided staff with a sample revitalization tax exemption bylaw that was created, I'm actually, I'm not sure if it was actually created by the city of Preston, but it's been employed by the city of Preston and it's been very successful in getting their downtown form and character buildings. The landlords have really jumped on. And now with so many insurance claims going on and so much revitalization and buildings being renovated, the businesses need a bit of a break, the landlords need a bit of a break, and I hope this would be a good opportunity to bring this back to the table. So that's what I'd like to bring forward.
Just a few questions and concerns on that one. Has there been any, let's say, recognition given to the financial impact regarding tax taxpayers on this one because of what we're going through right now?
That I would expect the information will come back from staff.
Or CEO.
So, thank you, Your Worship. So as staff looks at this, they will take and determine what's necessary for the city of Grand Forks, the terms, there'll be a little bit of research that needs to be done. And that would also include the impact of the, I guess, lesser tax collection and how that gets offset. So there's going to be a few components in there that staff will have to work on to develop something that's going to fit for the organization and for them.
So could you read your motion back?
Sorry, let me. I could like, on second. Just point of order, there's other things in the reports that we need to discuss as well, and we already have a motion on the table to accept the reports. So I totally support your tax bylaw as well, but I just think for process, we need to deal with the reports first, accept them and then put this motion on the table.
That's why I wanted to call the question on the reports.
Well, we do have a lot of other things in the reports to deal with, so if that, that's okay.
So what are the rights?
Counselor Tripp had quite a number of questions in her report, some of which we talked about this morning. But the one that particularly stands out to me that I would like staff to be able to make some comments onto the public is where we're at with B.C. Housing and getting temporary housing units here for our vacancies.
Your Worship, there's nothing new yet. Like I said, we are going to be hopeful that we're going to hear some news from B.C. Housing. Like I said, it is their message to get out. We can try and advocate and try and get as many cases. We do have the reports and everything that we were required to give to B.C. Housing as far as information goes, so they can come up with a decision. And like I said, we will hope that we're going to hear something from them to provide to the residents and to the council.
So in other words, in a nutshell, it's still pending?
We don't know exactly what it looks like and until they give us that direction, you know, we're referring up and maybe.
Counselor Go.
Thank you, Mayor Connet. Yeah, we were, council was putting together a spreadsheet, as we all know, just for public update, just to try and figure out what some of the major questions might be that we would like to see answers to. I'm wondering whether or not a lot of these questions will find answers, obviously as we roll things out, but maybe on Wednesday night, when the public meeting is presented? I'm just asking that question of the CEO, do you think that might be the case?
Your Worship, I know that the communications piece is being worked on. I know that most of these questions have been passed around to the entities, so to speak, that will be able to provide some answers. Or if there is no answer, they would have to say that that's not it is. So I know that between the EOC Information Officer and our own communication strategy that I believe that there's an FAQ that has come out. I don't know if it's on the website yet, but I believe that most of those will be addressed during that and like through answers at the meetings and so on.
Our best hope would probably be that someone from B.C. Housing would be at the meeting. That would be, let's say, the ideal situation because then they can speak to it directly so that there's no confusion whatsoever. And their response then can be absorbed by the public and consumed in whatever way that's fit. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in the past week and a half, maybe two weeks, I just felt that there's been a lot better communication between staff and council that we have. They're getting a lot more information now from the EOC and through staff have been included in the conversations as to what's going on with a lot of these different questions. And although we can't get definite answers on a lot of them, like I know people really want to hear, I do feel more comfortable now that the process is in the works, as slow as and frustrating as it might be, it is happening. And I was happy to hear this morning that people can park their RVs on their properties if they want to while they're rebuilding and at least provides more security with more residents present in Rocco. So little things are moving forward. And like you said, on Wednesday at the public meeting, I'm sure we'll get a lot more answers. And this week as well, we've put those measures in place and we have the right people coming this week to be able to get good, solid answers for those questions. So that is encouraging.
May I just say, I applaud the public that they keep coming out to these meetings, even though some of them get a little bit carried away, but the emotions do run high right now and it's fully understandable. But at least everybody is coming out, expressing their concerns, which in reality does help us as council and mayor to be able to realize some of the concerns that are out there. Because some of the concerns we might not even realize. We realize it's been flooding, we realize it's a disaster, but some of the other concerns, we don't directly know the intricate details. So thank you for that. Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, one of the biggest obstacles that I've been hearing about so far is insurance claims. And I know with the businesses, like, their claims are all identical because it was all groundwater and storms who were backed up, brought onto the road. And they've got adjusters going, you know, probably about 30% of the businesses have been denied at this point, their claims, whereas some have been approved. And so there's no consistency between the insurance companies or the appraisers. In fact, some of the businesses have called back and asked for another appraiser who's coming, flipped the whole thing over and said, well, yes, absolutely, this is covered. We have a situation where we have a landlord and a tenant, both have the same insurance underwriter, two different appraisers, and the landlord was approved and the tenant was denied. So it's, we're doing a survey right now, once the business is on who their insurance companies are and have they been accepted, have they been denied, what was the reason, what was their deductible? And we're hoping to be pursuing that further with the Insurance Bureau of Canada to get some of these questions answered, because there's just too many discrepancies. And I have to say too, that I was at a meeting on May 30th with some representatives from provinces and some of the agencies. And one good takeaway from this, and I think it was Ron Burleson, the Executive Director for the Provincial Disaster Recovery, he said, and I titled my actual report when I wrote it up, never waste a good disaster. So everything that's happened here is a new learning curve because they haven't had to deal with a flood of this magnitude in B.C. Most of the disasters in the EOCs have been set up for wildfire threats. So flooding is a whole different ballgame. I mean, when you have a fire, your house burns down, it's gone, insurance builds a new one. When you've got water damage, which is probably the worst, it can take weeks and months before it gets all sorted out, cannot be remediated, cannot be fixed, you know? So it's quite a lot more complicated. So they're all learning from this. Everybody that's in the EOC and all the agencies that are involved are all learning from this, from our disaster here. So that hopefully any community that has to go through it again in the future, they'll have better answers for them.
Just to weigh in on the insurance element of it, on the meeting on Wednesday, we will have a representative from IBC Insurance Bureau of Canada and also Mr. Aaron Sutherland, the Vice President of the Insurance Bureau of Canada, will be in Grand Forks on the 25th. And I believe he'll be meeting with Jennifer Wetmore from Community Futures. And I will be putting a call into him based on Jennifer's recommendations that we try to keep him here an extra day, hopefully be able to address some of the concerns to the citizens should it not be remedied at the meeting on Wednesday. So he would be the key figure to be able to explain a lot of these discrepancies.
Yeah, he's coming on Wednesday to talk at the community meeting. He's coming back on the 25th with setup appointments. He's coming with a team and they're going to have appointments already booked for business owners that are having problems with their insurance companies. And so he's, they've already set those invitations out to the business community to book those appointments now. So there is an opportunity.
Is it just for businesses or?
I believe at this point, I know the invitations have gone to business owners. I'm not sure about tenants or landowners, private residents, so I'm not sure.
Anyway, moving along. All right. Any other comments?
Just my motion.
All those in favor of receipt of the reports? Either of you, carry. Now we move on to the motion. We have a second, I believe.
Yes.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right. Moving along. To item seven, which is the report from council's representatives to the regional district of Kootenay Boundary, verbal report from the RDKB rep, which would be myself. All right. It's going to be a bit of a lengthy one, but we'll try to make it as short as possible. May 24th board meeting, we have delegation with Chris Marsh, manager of emergency programs and EOC director. Subject matters were boundary flooding update, PowerPoint presentations, some basic information, the general role of the EOC, the partnership and assistance from provincial agencies, Canadian forces, Red Cross, SAR, search and rescue, rapid damage assessment training, overall recovery matters. Then the Chair turned over the conversation to Dan Derby, who was the EOC Deputy Director. His topics were the info regarding recovery stage transition, the Resilience Center opening at the Curling Rink Saturday, May 26 at 9:00 a.m. A lot of these items are already basically redundant because they've already occurred, but this is what occurred at the meeting. And then there was conversation with the province regarding funding and assistance to develop a longer-term recovery plan. Tipping fees were waived at that meeting. Landfill hours were extended for Sunday and Monday from 8:30 to 4:00 until deemed that they were no longer required, which in my opinion would be quite a while. Then there was a notification from Director G initiating the service withdrawal of the electoral area E and West Boundary from BEES, which is the Boundary Economic Development Service, that it should be received. Chair Russell explained the necessity for the BCDC to continue with complete service review process. Then conversations around the cannabis legalization and local government roles, such as legalization costs to the taxpayers and the implementation costs. And there was discussions on boundary funding, the recovery plan, which was, at that time, decided to hire Norex Engineering Limited, which at this point is no longer active. The second part was the recovery coordinator, a temporary basis subject to provincial funding. The Resiliency Center, the Curling Rink with the Red Cross and other stakeholder agencies. Fourth item was the volunteer coordinator, coordination and community relations. And was it considered, was the Collective Roots Consulting as an agent of the RDKB volunteer coordination? And on item five, establishment of a Kettle River Watershed Authority Service was considered. And the RDKB staff were to undertake the background work, drafting and service establishment bylaw for a new Kettle River Watershed Service with the intention of seeking consent of the electors during the October 2018 elections. That takes care of that one. At the BCDC on June 6th, again, a notice from Director G to withdraw from the BEES service was received. Boundary Animal Control, the extension of the contract with the commissioners from September 1st, 2018 to August 31st, excuse me, 2021. Then there was also a request from Tom Sprado, the manager of facilities and recreation, a request for an additional 4,500 so as to proceed with the facility condition assessment of the DF Curling Rink. The history is that the UBCM grant was approved for 15,000 and was insufficient funds to all of the projects there in combination. And that, all right, reports. Counselor Butler. Oh, and just, I'm not done yet, sorry. From this morning's, we had Director Russell that was not able to attend. And his items of discussion were supposed to be for the agricultural plan, that it could be received. I mean, be happy to do it another day if we would like to defer it because it gets too intense. And it is a lengthy document, about 90 pages. So we could defer that one like you had mentioned. And as far as the trails plan, it's been agreed to move into phase two, which is the consultation phase. Counselor Butler.
So you mentioned that the regional district is considering implementing a new Kettle River Watershed Authority Service. They already have the committee, so I'm just curious what that service is going to be providing? They are going out at the election referendum, so it's something to think again.
Director Russell had basically prepared the night before quite a lengthy amount of documents and it's still work in progress, so to speak, and we're going to be dealing with it. it at the next one, because there's a lot of questions on that one. I believe the documents are even accessible on their website, so it's too lengthy to get into it. I don't want to put the gallery through this. Councilor Tripp?
I was gonna ask exactly the same question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Need a mover to receive? Councilor Ross, Councilor Hammond, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Moving on to number nine. Requests arising from correspondence. Nine A, subject Grand Forks Slow Pitch Tournament. Letter of request for permission, a special occasion liquor license from 5:00 to 10:00 PM on July 14th and from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on July 15th and 16th at Dick Bartlett Park for the annual Slow Pitch Tournament. Recommendation is that council approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to the Grand Forks Slow Pitch Tournament from 5:00 to 10:00 PM on July 14th and from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on July 15, 16 at Dick Bartlett Park, subject to obtaining third-party alcohol liability insurance, naming the city of Grand Forks as an additional insured on that policy. All event liquor providers to hold a serving at right liquor license certificate and ICBC drinking and driving warning posters to be displayed. May I have a move please? Councilor Hammond? Councilor Butler? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Nine B, subject matter Canafest, letter of request of a special occasion liquor license extension of the noise control bylaw for August 9, 10, 11, 2018. The recommendation is that council approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to Canafest Music Festival Limited for the Canafest 2018 event from August 9th to August 11th, 2018, between the hours of 2:00 PM to midnight each day at James Donaldson Park, subject to obtaining third-party alcohol liability insurance, naming the city of Grand Forks as an additional insured on that policy. All event liquor providers to hold a serving at right license certificate and ICBC drinking and driving warning posters to be displayed. Uh, we have a second recommendation that he wants, but don't think. Yeah, so I have a mover on that first one, please. Councilor Ross, Councilor Hammond, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. And the second recommendation is that council approves to extend the noise control bylaw number 1963 to 1:00 AM from August 9th to August 11th, 2018, each day for the Canafest event. May I have a move please? Councilor Ross, Councilor Hammond. Excuse me. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to information items. Subject is Senator for DC, the correspondence regarding border implications of Bill C-45. And the second item is the Grand Forks Downtown Business Association Flood Disaster Mitigation. Moving on. There's no motion or recommendation required, so we move on to questions from the public and then yeah. Councilor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just wanted to just make one comment on the letter that came from the Honorable Sen. there for British Columbia about the border implications for Bill C-45. I don't know how this kind of information is communicated, if that's something that maybe it can be picked up in the newspaper and on the radio or whatever, just so that people know that there could definitely be a very large issue if they're crossing the border with cannabis or even having ingested it or smoked it, that there could be a very grave ramifications for that.
Councilor Hammond?
Yeah, this is, this is something that's been covered on national news quite a few times. I've seen it now, and they've had a US immigration lawyer speak to it, who's from Bellingham, who lives in Seattle, about the problems that people aren't realizing because they recognize that Washington State is legal, the DC is legal, but when they cross that border, they're going through the US, the whole country, not a state. So that message has been out there, and I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot more coverage on that as well as.
Just that we have, we have two borders, two border crossings right here.
Yeah.
And would be good to let people know.
Councilor Ross?
Yeah, I was just finding something a little bit comical. Yeah, I read it, and I thought, wow, people have been talking about this for over 30 years now, going back and forth across this border. And I know a lot of skiers and snowboarders and people of all ages who go back and forth and are pulled over and questioned, and it's been going on for a long time. I don't see how legalization is really gonna change things. People are aware of the fact that they can't bring, bring this back and forth across the border. And there has been really good, like, it's legal in Oregon, and it's semi-legal in Washington, and people know that they can't bring it across the DC.
Going to use the state.
I know. So I mean, it's still the same.
But they're encouraging it a lot.
And they ask about alcohol. They always ask you, when you go across the border, do you have alcohol? And they're probably just gonna say, and, do you have any?
No, they ask if you've ever smoked weed. I've never been asked, but this is what the lawyers talked about?
Mm, I know, I read it.
And then they refuse entry.
Yeah. I can't, you can't refuse. Okay, I don't get into it, but I just think the whole thing is a moot point. It's like, there is a lot of information out there, and people, so you're talking that the US border crossers, border crossing artists?
Yes, you have.
They're going to arrest you?
No. They just refuse entry.
I don't, I don't. They might give you a warning.
I've never.
It's similar to a DUI.
Yes.
You had a DUI candidate, you'd refuse entry too.
You know what, it's, alcohol is worse than cannabis. We're treating it like.
First of all, it's not legalized yet, so I think we gotta wait till.
Yeah. Um, it's not, it's not about that, it's about something else. On the DBA's letter that they sent to us, the long-term needs they were talking about here, storm drain backflow prevention, and I thought that was quite an issue too. I saw the water coming up through the drains in my neighborhood, but I was surprised to find out this morning, and I just wanted to check with staff that was accurate, that what I heard, that we actually do have backflow prevention on most of our storm drains except for the ones in City Park, and it's just actually that one area where it's all backing up from. So it doesn't sound like it would be too difficult to fix.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have gates on most of the outlets on the storm system. There are a couple in addition to City Park that don't have them, but they are mostly higher than the one in City Park. The issue with the flood is that there was enough positive pressure from the storm system that the gates were open, at least partially, enough that the flow could then reverse direction and come back inside. So the solution would be more robust than simply gating the outlets. It would involve putting a valve on the storm system.
Yeah. It wants to block flows up straight through backwards. Councilor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, and also in just responding to this letter as well, I think that the Downtown Business Association and then also the businesses down there would, would be happy to know that we have not only received this for information, but are going to be somehow taken seriously some of the requests that they've made, the immediate needs and then the longer-term needs. I don't know where, you know, how we, how these things can be addressed necessarily. Some of them are probably gonna cost a fair bit of money, some of them are going to involve maybe engineering and then also financial considerations. But I do feel that sometimes requests come to us, they're received for information, and then it, it feels to the people that are bringing them that they've just kind of disappeared into a black hole. And so I'm just hoping that, that that doesn't happen with this, this request here.
Councilor Hammond?
Yeah, and I just want to emphasize, this letter isn't just going to the city of Grand Forks, it's going to all levels of government. So it'll be going to our mayor, it's going to Minister of Martinsworth and the preem. So hopefully, you know, there will be some action along.
Okay, and here we thought we were going to questions from the public. Go ahead, Kate.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know, since the delegation is still here, may I ask a question of the delegation? Is that allowed?
Yeah.
Can you answer a question?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. And forgive me if these aren't questions you have the answer to at the current moment.
Could you put on your mic for this kid so everybody?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to know if you have any indication as to the potential operating hours? And if you have the answer, that would be great. The percentage local versus tourist traffic coming through? I'm just curious, is it supposed to be like 70% people coming through on the highway, 30% locals, or what that might look like?
So I don't actually need a microphone. I'm, I'm not sure of those two answers.
Okay.
Well, what I can do is provide you my card, and we could connect after. We could talk to Paul and obviously the restaurant owner group, and then we could provide that to, I'm assuming you represent the paper?
Yeah.
And then we could provide that to the paper to support your article.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Sure.
I don't have the answers, I wouldn't wanna misrepresent it, and then we can connect. I'll give you my card.
Because I'm sure Paul has done, not Paul, yeah, Paul has done a strategic impact study on the whole situation here, I'm sure he has.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is true for Odeo.
Thank you.
Les, go ahead.
Les Johnson, GFTV. First off, we were in Kelowna for Bryan Adams last night, and Tim Hortons there closed at 11 o'clock. Not 24 hours, I don't know, they might have arrived, it's open 24 hours in this one. And even though I've had my issues with, in the past with Tim Hortons and workers from outside of the country, I'm actually glad to hear that Tim Hortons is coming. And as far as taking away spaces from RVs, just the sheer numbers of people in RV versus all those people who'll be going through Tim Hortons, I'm fine with that. Every summer, I'm stopped by people driving through downtown going, where's the Timmies? Oh, it's an hour that way, or it's an hour that way. At least, if they, it's like gold in the water. If the stream slows down, the gold falls out. If they stop and buy something at Timmies, they look around and go, oh, look, let's go over there, as opposed to driving on through to Soho Castle. So yeah, I'm hoping that Jungers and Kokomo's and places like that will be okay with that. But anyways, on to Councilor Tripp. I'm, I'm touched that you have such concern for the poor pot smokers who might be crossing the border and what the senator has put in this thing, but you know, as other people have pointed out, people who are either consuming or producing pot, that whole thing, we're all savvy on all that stuff. We know about all that stuff. It's only the naive people who don't have anything to do with it who will be caught unawares.
There you go.
And when you cross the border, if they ask you, have you ever smoked pot, they can literally bar you from entering the States again. I'm not sure how that's gonna change when all of Canada becomes a legal pot-smoking paradise, but yeah, we know how it goes at the border. We don't have to worry about that, but thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Any other questions? Lady in control.
Can I ask the council as a whole?
Can you identify yourself, please?
If they have considered the impact on the small businesses on Second Street and Market Avenue, if Tim Hortons opens up right in the center of town? These people have been with us, serving us for a number of years. They are faced with devastating costs, getting, losing money daily by not being open, cost to get open again. Have you considered some other place for Tim Hortons? Does it have to be right downtown?
Until we answer, you need to identify yourself, please.
What do you say? What is your name? Evelyn Schofield.
Thank you. Councilor Hammond and Councilor Butler?
The choice of locations is not councils to choose. This is private property, so it's not city property that's been sold for this development. It's private property, and the landowner is doing the development. As far as the impact on downtown businesses are concerned, I think it's going to benefit the downtown businesses. It's going to bring more traffic into the downtown, more foot traffic, more pedestrians, more people, more awareness to our downtown, whereas flow-through traffic, right now, we probably have 10,000 vehicles a day going back and forth on Highway 3 right through town, and now we're gonna see more of those people stopping in town.
At Timmies, not at Kokomo's.
They're stopping in town regardless.
Not at Kokomo's, not at Jogo's, not at Marvelous Munchies.
But they're not stopping here now, though. We're gonna be stopping the traffic that would normally flow through. I'm still gonna go to Jogo's for my ex-Benedict because I don't get that at Tim Hortons. You know, I'll still go to Wooden Spoon for lunch, but I'll tell you, at 10 o'clock at night, if I feel like a cup of coffee or an ice cap, I know where I'm gonna get one, which I can't get right now. But we've got economic development happening in this community, which is gonna increase our tax base, it's gonna encourage new developers to come into town, and it's gonna create employment. So all in all, it's a benefit to Grand Forks. And whether you like the location or not, it's not council's decision on where that location is because it's private property. We have no say.
Well, why are we even discussing it then? That's what I wanna know.
Because you guys have to agree that yes, Tim Hortons can go in at the center of town.
Yeah, because with all due respect, you asked a question. That's why we're trying to respond to your question. But this establishment, where it's located, and Alan Hannenbauer had the greatest idea for this because he was thinking of the downtown core, because this establishment becomes a containment factor, a containment factor, which keeps people here to explore the downtown core. I know you find that hard to believe, but it will happen.
And if it's zoned appropriately, we don't have.
Councilor Butler?
Yeah, I didn't understand that when I got on council either. I saw previous councils talk about McDonald's, and I got furious. Why are they approving this, you know? But at this point, what comes before us is what's called a development permit, and what they have to do in that development permit is reach our zoning requirements. If they reach our zoning requirements, I have no legal authority to reject their development. If I do, I put the city in a legal situation. If they meet our requirements, I have to approve it. The only way that we can stop these types of developments is to look at our zoning bylaw and put stipulations in our zoning bylaw that prevent a drive-through. Then you're not gonna have McDonald's and any of these fast food restaurants, but we have to change it at the zoning bylaw level. It has to come, right now, what came before me tonight, I have no grounds to deny it, even if I want to.
Any other questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Councilor Ross, Councilor Hammond, all those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.